Anyone need a, since we emailed them this time, how'd that work?
Fine.
You need one. Okay, we are-
Email me two. An email that's no longer in existence.
Okay, we are live.
Hey, I'd like to call the, uh, tonight's meeting, September twelfth, twenty seventeen, Union County Planning Board, uh, order. First thing we'd like to do is welcome everybody and, uh, we would ask that the board, uh, approve Charles as a voting member in order for us to have a quorum. So, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If approved, raise your hand, et cetera. Okay. Charles, we appreciate you doing that tonight.
Thank you.
Uh-
Taking just a second for me, Don, I'll make sure I make my notes right here, so. Alright, very good.
Okay. Also, we'd like to welcome, uh, Patrick Harrison as our newest voting member. He was approved at the last Union County Board of Commissioners, uh, meeting. Uh, so Patrick, we welcome you on, on board here. Would you like to tell us about your why you're vacating? I'm just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. Uh, also, we'd like to ask for approval of the agenda, uh, with any, as it stands, or if there's any other things anybody can-
Motion to approve, is it?
Motion to approve? Okay, all of those in favor, raise your hand. Like signs, no? Okay. Everybody voted, you know, for the agenda. Okay. We've got the approval for the August first, twenty seventeen minutes that we need to approve. Haven't had a chance to look at those, please take a minute or two to look at them. While you're looking, if I may, I've got a couple of questions I wanted to ask, uh, staff. This kinda came out of, uh, uh, our Board of Commissioners meeting the other, the other night on the zoning request that they had to look at for our last, uh, planning board meeting. This stuff, there was a comment made by Commissioner Helms that the, I think it was in response to someone, whether it was the mayor or somebody made a comment about how the, uh, reports on the comp plan, U D O, et cetera, uh, copies were requested by the, uh, town of Waxaw, you guys supplied them. And he said that the, there needs to be a quote, a close working relationship between both the county and the municipality. If you go back to the minutes, uh, where we took like, uh, lot and building restrictions and some things, I believe there's some signage in there, things of this nature. Am I correct on that? Brian? Or is it just lot sizes? I saw some.
About the change in, do you have a, do you have a specific number we're talking about?
No, I di- I didn't write the number down, like, I couldn't find it, I just had the question. I guess the question is, on any changes, whether it's a unified planning ordinance or whatever, uh, are we taking into consideration like, uh, different municipalities and how it might affect them in the future? Or do we just do it and then send it on?
Uh, to be honest with you, we literally just do it and send it on to-
Okay. I, that comment stuck with me after that meeting, and so I wanted to ask that. And, uh, uh, okay, alright, that's good. That's the only question I had about it.
Okay.
The minutes. So, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, is it?
Thank you, Robert, we appreciate the motion. All those in favor, uh, say aye.
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 For a vote, thank you. Okay, the first, uh, topic up is number five, the transportation update to the unified planning ordinance. Boy, are you gonna talk about that?
Sure will. Uh, thank you for letting me speak, Chairman, and, uh, members of the planning board. In your packet, I have developed a series of amendments to the U D O as it relates to some recent case law in North Carolina that has caused our legal staff to, to advise us on the legality on quite a bit of our right-of-way reservation considerations in the U D O, as well as references to our county adopted multimodal transportation plan. When, uh, in the past seven months, the Metropolitan Planning Organization that governs a lot of the transportation planning efforts within Union County, uh, has adopted their own comprehensive transportation plan. And that document, because it covers all the municipalities and has been adopted by all the municipalities, we felt that that is the more appropriate document to make reference to when it comes to new alignments or cross-sections or the amount of right-of-way that's required instead of the county's plan. The county's plan was meant to be input into the comprehensive transportation plan, since it's since been adopted. As it relates to the network, we wanna make reference to that. And so, um, we have done strike-throughs on the text that's to be deleted, and the, the new text is shown as read. This affects, uh, quite a bit of right-of-way preservation that we currently have, um, as a requirement for developments. A, a case in Waxaw, in unincorporated Waxaw, um, stimulated this discussion because they had not one but two cross-sections of future roads for the southern portion of the Waxaw Parkway crossing the property, and they weren't asking for rezoning, so there was no real negotiation to be had. And they said, "Well, we don't wanna do this, we just wanna do what we can do by right." And they brought in their attorney and, and said, "Are you guys gonna require this? Because we're gonna take you to court if you do." We went to our legal staff and they said, "Yeah, if they take us to court, we're gonna lose because of these recent cases." And so, um, we told them, and also told the town of Waxaw, much to their chagrin, that this development is gonna be submitted and it's going to, uh, bisect their Waxaw Parkway, the southern loop, and is gonna make that, make that development infeasible unless they're, or that road infeasible unless they're willing to purchase the land and condemn the, the lots once they're developed, which they haven't said that they're going to. So, um, we wanna update our ordinance language to reflect the current case law, bring us in, into line with, um, what's legal within North Carolina. I will say that the, that CARTPO, the, the M P O for the majority of Union County is working on some ordinance language that is supposed to represent best practices in, in North Carolina in terms of the most we can do and still be within the law as it relates to right-of-way reservation. That is not, it's, it's not available right now. We intend to use that once it is available, but we really don't have a timeline on when it is going to be available, so we felt it would be best to make these modifications now and then wait for their model language when it becomes available. So, I'm happy to any, answer any questions you may have. And I'm kinda disappointed there's no one here in the audience, 'cause this is one of those instances where we're proposing, uh, lessening the, the development regulations instead of making them more strict, so, no one's seeing this.
She wants to go through these individually, so you understand kind of how each one, or how, how do you wanna handle that?
Somebody have a preference?
Matt, if you could quickly, just to give a quick explanation would be beneficial.
I'm sorry?
Like, going through each one kinda quickly, just to give us a-
Okay, okay, so, uh, going on the first page of the memo, um, the amendments regarding the signs under fifty point zero four zero. It's about freestanding signs reflecting the current, um, right-of-way, instead of set back off of a future one, because we can't require them to set back off of the future. Uh, the second one, sixty dash one ten, design, uh, referencing the comprehensive transportation and any other adopted transportation plan. So that it gives us the flexibility to use the comprehensive transportation plan as it relates to strictly about the right-of-way, but as it relates to perhaps some other improvements that may be adopted through small area plans or corridor studies, we have the ability to reference those as well. Going down to sixty one ten.
Boy, just a minute, if I could ask a question. Based on this, are we saying that when these plans were approved back a year or so ago, all the work that was done on them, people that sit on the plans, steering committee, et cetera, that they were not right?
No, so, do you want, do you want to tackle this one?
I can tackle that, that, what's, what's happened is that there have been a couple of high-profile lawsuits against the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding reservation of right-of-way for future corridors, specifically the Shelby Bypass and the, um, Winston Salem Loop that they lost. They were reserving right-of-way, telling the property owners they couldn't develop on the property, and that they would be compensated for their land when the project was funded, and they moved forward, and, and the court said, "No, that's, that's not okay. When you start restricting them, you've gotta compensate them."
Yeah, but keep in mind, uh, you know, all the work we did on those plans where we identified right-of-ways and things like that, we used that in rezonings and other things where we can ask for that. But on by-right developments, we really can't say, "Well, we showed this as a future one hundred-foot right-of-way road, you need to dedicate fifty feet of your right-of-way to, to the state for that." We can't say that. On rezonings, we can make that a request. So we use those plans when we have the ability to ask for it, but it's not something we can mandate on a by-right project.
That's correct.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, moving down to sixty dash, or point one ten, talking about the, uh, streets must have the right-of-way, complies with the transportation plan. Just has to have the, essentially, the existing right-of-way that will safely accommodate the, the improvements. So if they have to put in turn lanes, they have to provide the right-of-way for the, the turn lanes if necessary, but not for the ultimate cross-section based off of some multi-lane vision of the future that isn't necessarily their fault that it's being done. Uh, sixty one ten, C two, uh, instead of the prescriptive right-of-way based on the C T P or other, or other definitions, uh, we have had pretty good, pretty good case law and guidance from the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding maintenance purposes for existing roads, which almost universally is, is sixty feet on roads that are not already improved to a wider cross-section. That's, um, on what's called a prescriptive easement. And so, the D O T has the, has the authority to go and maintain the road and the, on the, uh, any kind of drainage structures on the sides. But things become a lot easier when you actually just own the land, fee simple. So as a part of the, uh, development process, we typically ask for the right-of-way to be, uh, dedicated up to the thirty-foot off of the center line, which you'll notice if you ever go to the, um, Union County Go Maps and you look and you zoom in, you have the parcel lo- parcel layer on, and you look and you see how it kinda zigzags back and forth. The reason why is because we've had dedications that have, um, resulted in either the, the ultimate cross-section or at least that thirty-foot, uh, off the center line. And then the second one is about the sidewalks or multipurpose paths. Um, again, we expanded it not only the trans- the Union County Transportation Plan, but any other adopted plans, because we do have other plans that could take effect. Um, we strike, on, going on to page two, we strike the right-of-way requirements with this table. It's no longer necessary now that we just have the thirty-foot off the center line. Um, and then the, the ones-
That, that whole table is gone as well?
That whole table would be gone.
And these are referenced, um, aren't they referenced in our, our conference press question, some of these right-of-ways?
They are, but, you know, if it's not codified in the ordinance, then that's just a, just a plan.
But it's, it's in there if we ever need to ask for a right-of-way in a rezoning. We have these classifications, they're just not in the ordinance.
As well as in the comprehensive transportation plan. Uh, amendment six and seven, just, just, uh, renumerates the, the subsequent sections of the U D O. Uh, amendment eight regards the, is in regarding to the boulevard and thoroughfare consistency with the transportation plan. Uh, just says they must be in, constructing in accordance with standards established by the N C D O T. So it puts the onus on them if they want to ask for more right-of-way above and beyond what we would. Amendment nine says that it deletes the provision that, you know, if it's scheduled for widening, they've gotta get us the land. That flies in the face of the, the federal guidelines regarding, which is called, called the Uniform Act, which is the, all the regulations that are used for compensating people for, for right-of-way purchases. And then amendments ten and eleven deal with the, the subsequent, um, renumbering of the, the, uh, sections. Amendment twelve, uh, just talks about adopted transportation plans. It expands it to be not the plan, but plans plural for any, any adopted plans in the area, whether it's the county, the C T P, or, or any kind of corridor or small area plans that could give guidance on transportation improvements. Amendment thirteen, it strips back the planned right-of-way to just the existing right-of-way and makes reference to that thirty-foot from center line. Some of these things are duplicate, because you'll see it within just subdivision, and some of it you'll see in zoning. And then amendment fourteen gives the definition of what is a comprehensive transportation plan, which wasn't previously listed. It's a plan set forth, and there's two statutes that are listed, because there's actually M P O, there's actually M P Os and R P Os. We have Metropolitan Transportation Planning Organizations, which are the urban ones, then you have Rural Transportation Planning Organizations, which are the rural ones, and together they, they cover all of North Carolina, so there's two statutes. And, um, they are directed by the, the legislature, and, um, they're ultimately housed within the, the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
Any questions, Bjorn? Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Good job.
Thank you.
Very well put together, easy to understand. Uh, do we wanna take any action on this tonight? Motion to approve, or?
Making motion to approve the amendments as they stand.
Okay, do we have a second? Thank you, Patrick, thank you. Robert, appreciate that. All those in favor of accepting this, raise your hand. Thank you, appreciate that. It's carried four zero. Okay, uh, request for planning board members on upcoming steering committees. You guys, okay?
Back to me.
Back to you, alright.
So there are two, there's a small area plan that we are conducting with Union, or with Indian Trail in the area of the Seacrest Shortcut Interchange with the Monroe Expressway, approximately six hundred acres, where, um, the two entities are going to look at a range of economic development, infrastructure, zoning, land use plan, maybe multimodal considerations, as it relates to, uh, growth, uh, in that interchange. What would be, uh, supported as it related to rezonings, as well as any kind of capital improvements appropriate to support future growth at that interchange. Indian Trail has identified quite a few members for the, um, steering committee that would govern this group, including, um, Union County Economic Development, the, uh, some prominent landowners in the area, private, uh, citizens who, um, have business interests in the area as well as planning board members. And so, uh, we agree with the recommendations they've had, um, but each entity is, is going to identify a planning board member, and we don't ask for any specific area of, of interest, like economic development or transportation or natural resources. Um, just a, just a planning board representation onto the study. And the same holds true for a second study that we're doing with Marshville that is, uh, studying the need, both short-term and long-term, for a bypass around Marshville. Uh, you may have heard about that, that there is, on the comprehensive transportation plan, there is a bypass on the south side of Marshville to facilitate east-west travel along U S seventy-four. Marshville has expressed concerns that building this is gonna suck the life out of their town, and perhaps they don't support building a bypass, not that it's funded, but they may not support it, and they may want to just have improvements done to the existing seventy-four, um, which may in fact be justified in light of the hundred and thirty-plus million dollar cost to build a bypass. So, the study is going to look at short-term and long-term needs along the corridor, look at what kind of operational improvements could be made to U S seventy-four going through Marshville, and would they be enough to serve traffic as a replacement to building the bypass? And so, uh, this study will involve a lot of stakeholders from Marshville, but we wanna have Union County representation as well, so we'd like to have a planning board member to also serve on that steering committee. Both of these processes are gonna be occurring at roughly the same time, they're gonna be starting in the next month or so, maybe two months, depending on the contracting process, and completed by mid-two thousand and eighteen. We'd have, uh, a handful of meetings for each of the processes, um, probably on the order of, of three or four per, per, uh, study, and you could have one representative serve on both of these committees, or you could have one representative for each of the committees. You can nominate one of your planning board members who isn't here tonight. But, um-
I've nominated, I've got it right here.
But, but ultimately, the, ultimately, the, uh, the county commission is who would approve the members. You would just nominate who you think should serve on it, and, um, they would serve for the duration of this, uh, the plan process, and then their, their duties would cease.
And, um, don't, don't confuse this with the item that is below this, which is to appoint a member to the C R T P O. That's a, that's a year-long appointment, that's not a temporary appointment, so that's a separate one we need to do after this.
Okay.
So you said there's roughly three to four meetings throughout the duration?
Yes.
Let me make the, uh, board aware that I received a note from Russell dated Friday, September eighth. It says, "Don, I will serve wherever needed." In discussing this, does the board feel like we need one person, or we need one on each one of these? One on Marshville, one on Indian Trail? It would mean double the amount of meetings if one person took it, or if we had two. I'm not saying either way recommended, but what is the board's wishes to recommend forward?
I would say if there's a second person that's interested, then perhaps one for each committee.
Okay, I happen to think that way too.
Absence of that, then, Russell, you get-
Okay, Charlie, what's your thoughts?
I'd try and put one on each committee.
One on each?
I would absolutely try and put one person-
We're in agreement on that, okay?
Is there anyone who wants to volunteer?
Well, Russell has volunteered, so that's the first one.
When do these meetings begin?
I don't think you'll have the first meeting before November. And I, I would say probably every two months for each of them.
Typically during the daytime hours, I'm assuming?
I can't say, and it's up to the whole group. I mean, we would, we would certainly provide teleconference and other capabilities, but with them being so infrequent, we'd like to, we'd like to do it to make as convenient as possible for face-to-face meetings.
I could do it. Okay, so what we've got, uh, right now, Charles has volunteered, emailed that Russell has volunteered. Do we have a motion to accept those?
I'm making motion to accept both candidates.
Do we have a second? Patrick's second. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, so be it. Russell and Charles.
Are, is one assigned to one versus the other?
Charles, you get to pick, you're here.
I do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would imagine that Russell's probably interested in the Indian Trail.
I would think so too.
Being that that's kinda his little area.
Is that okay with you, or?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Is that okay with you two, Bjorn? Okay with you, Bjorn?
As long as you're participating, it's all I care about.
Okay, alright. And it will be, I'm with us from Marshville, Indian Trail. Okay, so that takes care of number six. Thank you, appreciate that. Now let's go to number seven, appoint a planning board member to the C R T P O.
I was just, we wanted to come back to tell you, Roger was our appointee, you know, and before that, uh, Russell was our appointee, uh, in case one of you gentlemen are lucky to do that, would you tell them what they're being involved as far as participation in that?
So CARTPO is the M P O that governs transportation planning for all of Ardell, all of Mecklenburg, and more than two-thirds of Union County. They are a organization created by the federal government, um, they've been around since, I guess, the seventies at this point. And they, because they're over a million people in size, they have a lot more authority than, say, the Rocky River R P O, which governs, um, Stanley, Anson, and, uh, portions of Union County. They are responsible for, um, developing the comprehensive transportation plan, which we just talked about, and its implications on our, our road network. The, their long-range plan, which is a fiscally constrained twenty-five-year document, which says, given how much money we raise within the state and in the national government, and that gets distributed back to North Carolina, that's how many roads we say can be funded, uh, based on our priorities and our candidate projects. And then they also say, "These are the ones that we say can be funded in the next five to ten years." So they play a big role in establishing policy in which projects get funded. Those are weighing in on inputs to the state. They also are passed through for about twenty-five million dollars a year in capital funds for projects. They funded, um, about a half a dozen, uh, intersection projects in Union County in the past year. Uh, the one at Newtown and Marvin, that was just funded, that was funded through them. Uh, another one in Wesley Chapel, one in Monroe, uh, another in Weddington. I know there's a couple more. And so, they, they do pass through funds that, that help, uh, build projects. So, seeing how the sausage is made through that process matters a lot, and process is important, because with a million and a half people, they have gotten to be very regimented. And so, it's unfortunately full contact. They have monthly meetings, they're in the evenings, but they're downtown in Charlotte. Do get fed, they have, um, they have sandwich trays ahead of time to eat, but the meals are six o'clock, I think it's the third Wednesday of the month? Um, meat monthly, and so, it's, um, it's typically two-hour meeting, give or take, and it's, it's, it's where you receive high-level briefings like the, um, the newspaper reports and T, and TV reports this past month about the, the study of the, uh, I seventy-seven toll lanes contracts, and whether the state did it properly, and whether, what are their options for canceling it or, or dialing it back and otherwise modifying it. That's where those reports are received, um, that's where the region gets to weigh in and, and give its, um, opinion on things. So, uh, Richard Helms is the, is the county representative, he's, he's very involved. He's very frustrated because it is weighted voting. Charlotte is about sixty percent of the study, of the, of the three county areas' population. They're about forty-four percent of the vote. So, all they need is a few friends, and they get thi- they get things passed, and that has been a, a point of contention, uh, in the past couple of years. So, it's, it is contentious, there, um, there aren't always hundred, or a hundred percent votes one way or the other. And, um, unfortunately, that's, that, that's the way it is. Charles is not gonna apologize for being sixty percent of the three county areas' population. So, that's, um, something that may get addressed through other legislative means, we're not sure. But it is a function of the, the federal government, so the state legislature can't come in and tell them, "You will change things."
Bjorn, it's very shocking, at the, uh, Union County Board of Commissioners meeting, this past meeting, when, uh, Commissioner Helms talked about the amount of money that, uh, was just lost by the county.
That's-
I couldn't believe it.
Well, Richard, I, I, I've spoken with, with Richard about that, and I've, it's not, it's not a directly true statement. What the vote that he's referring to is in relation to what used to be called the Garden Parkway, uh, crossing over from Mecklenburg into Gaston County. There is a shortened portion of that project that Gaston County wants to get funded, and Charlotte, to a lesser degree, wants to see funded. It totals about two hundred million dollars, so if you split it roughly equally, it's about a hundred million on either side of the county, on either county. And for that project to get funded, it would have to score very well from a technical perspective through the N C D O T's process. And then the three-county M P O on both sides, there's a three-county M P O on the Ga- on the Gaston County side that includes Lincoln and Cata- and Cleveland Counties, and then there's one on, obviously, our side with Ardell and Union Counties. The two organizations would have to collectively put their weight onto a project, as well as the two divisions, who also get points to, uh, assigned to projects as their votes, they would collectively have to agree. So you'd have to have four entities throwing their weight behind something- who also get points to uh assign to projects as their votes, they would collectively have to agree. So you'd have to have four entities throwing their weight behind something in order to say in addition to it be to be technically justified. So it would have to be, one, a very good project, and, two, have the support of four organizations representing over two million people to say they wanted that project funded. So it is, it, no money was lost at that, in that vote at all. If two or three other things happened, yes, money would get assigned to a project, but it would be a project that was determined to be a good project already. So.
Ryan, uh, did I misstate my statement about that? Did I misunderstand what what he said?
Hey, so I was the, what the um Vice Chairman Helms was saying.
Right.
I think that Vice Chairman Helms just, he kinda singled it down to a a smaller
Okay.
issue, and there's a, there's a bigger picture. And all Bjorn's doing is just kinda pointing out.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's the, and and I know it contradicts what what Mr. Helms said. I I told him that after the meeting. I said, you know, that's not, it's not exactly how it how it works, but um that is, that's the big picture of that reference, of that hundred million dollars.
I think he was singling in to the the smaller thing, and that is if all the stars align, yes, it it will result in that kind of a, uh, I guess, a the change in the funding strategy.
Well, just deciding which projects to fund.
Right. But there's a, it's a bigger, it's a bigger issue, and there's a lot, a lot more things are gonna have to happen before that actually occurs.
Okay, any questions or comments for Bjorn?
And do you wanna clarify, um, this is a ex officio, um, representative, so they're a non-voting member. They're certainly, you know, able to attend and be part of the discussion, but it's a non-voting position.
That's gonna be my question.
Yeah, it's non, it's non-voting. Um, Charlotte Mecklenburg Planning Commission also has a representative. I think Aradell does as well. I think all three counties have a representative on it.
What's the thoughts of the board? So what what is the expectation of the member of this board? Um, are they expected to report information back? Are they expected to just observe? What what is the goal of having this position?
Honestly, it was created in the past decade as a ex officio to allow the planning process for land development and growth to dialogue with the transportation planning process. It's, it's not like you're gonna change things. No one, unless you're Charlotte, no one entity can truly change how the direction of uh of decisions go within the organization. But i- i- it's more to be informed and to participate in the discussion because certainly you're at the table and you can fully participate and ask questions and and give, give observations.
I believe, um, Roger Stanton was our appointed member, and and I think Roger may have reported a couple of times, things that occurred, but it was not expected that he reported to this board. I think that's really up to the board, if they appoint an individual, what kind of information do you want an individual to provide you?
At one time, you know, we didn't have a transportation planner that attended the meetings, and that person would on a regular basis report back what, you know, what since, you know, we have a, that that role is, you know, been done. Is it just more of a support function for the commissioner?
It it's really more of a li- liaison between uh the planning board and the staff and the transportation folks, that's really all.
What is the wishes of the board? Does anybody here show an interest in it?
I know Russell has expressed an interest in that as well.
Okay. Uh, are you saying he would take on two then?
When I spoke to him about this previously, he specifically mentioned the CARTPO. Um, at the time, he was not aware of the steering committee appointments for the Marshville and the small area plan. So he he specifically expressed an interest in being the delegate for the CARTPO. Now, of course, you know, he's not here tonight, but I know he expressed that interest in being.
Well, if he, if he wants to serve on on the CARTPO board and not on both boards, I'd be happy to replace him on the steering committee if he decides to only go on on one of them.
Based on that comment, Charles, how do you feel?
That would be fun.
And then Charles can have his choice of which committee he wants to be.
That's okay. I'm 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 good with Marshville.
I also feel good about it too. So, uh, let's make a switch. If, all those in favor of Russell going to CRTPO, raise your hand. Okay, now, Bjorn, you two discuss, please, which one you would like.
Marshville's good.
Charles for Marshville, and you're taking Indian Trail? All those in favor of each of that, raise your hand. Okay, so Marshville, Charles, and Indian Trail, Robert, if that's okay, Brian. Okay, all right. Okay, is there anything else, Bjorn, that you wanna bring to us or talk about or anything?
I've talked a lot. I have to answer any questions.
Appreciate your talking. Appreciate the explanation. Good job. Good job as usual. Okay, staff, is there any?
Well, I think the two upcoming projects were the main thing about the staff projects. I think Bjorn explained what those were, so I think the two big things on staff agenda for this coming year.
Uh, again, I wanna go on record, if I might, just saying, Brian, I appreciate all your help for last Monday night. Very much.
Very well.
Okay. Any other items for discussion or questions for staff? Not? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Robert?
Second.
Charles, second. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay.
All right.
Immediately dismissed.
All right, let's turn the uh, turn the recordings off.
That one? Uh-oh.
We have not started, John.
No, that one was on and then it died. All right, well, hopefully the other one got it because that did not record anything. It was on and then it stopped working.